As far as a city council's special meeting will now be called to art of Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Kadeem?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Yeah.
La Libby, LaBeau?
Yeah.
Lee?
Peckham?
Here.
Pelletier?
Yeah.
Pereira?
Here.
And President Ponti?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item on our agenda this evening is citizens' input. First person assigned to speak for three minutes, Darrell Gagnon, 76 Frost Street. The microphone will be right there under the no admittance area, please. Yes, sir.
It's on?
It is.
First of all, we're even. Up until last week, I didn't know how to pronounce his full name. I always called him Pont, and his own family calls him Ponti. Now he calls me Ganyan when my name is Ganyan. So now we're even. Thank you very much for this opportunity to address you all. I think I know each and every one of you. I voted for each and every one of you at one time or another, and I think all of you know that. I know we've only got three minutes, but I will be fast. I sat in that seat for four years, and then Carlton Vaviras appointed me as a director of personnel for the city, so I was a department head for a couple of years. And I left that to be a town administrator in Westport. I'm only telling you that because I do have some budget background experience. But I have to take my hat off to you for the things that you've dealt with. I've listened to some of the council meetings, and I honestly don't think that I could have handled some of the issues 30 years ago, 40 years ago, like you guys are today. So I sincerely want to thank you for that. Some of you are really, really profoundly in-depth knowledge of budgets, like Sean Kadeem. I think he's probably the most educated person with state law, city law, town law involving budgets. So my hat goes off to him particularly. And then for a personal principle, like Chris Peckham here, Peckham standing up for the city police situation. So I've got one minute left or something like that?
You've got to wave the rules.
Okay.
Motion to wave the rules has been made by Counselor Kilby. Seconded by Counselor Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. You have all the time you need, Mr. Gagnon.
Okay. I have one minute left?
No, you can keep going.
All the time.
Okay. The, okay, I'm here to address the budget issue. I became primarily involved when an email was sent by the mayor of the city to the city council on a Sunday saying, for legal reasons, following the charter, which is a law. But that is a heck of a way to run a city, in my opinion. I know had I been a city councilor at the time, I would have been grievously offended, and some of you were. And I think rightfully so. Communication is so important, and we don't know where fault lies. I'm not going to hear the point fingers at where fault lies. But that's what triggered my interest in the budget situation. So I took a very active interest in it from that point on. I hadn't for a number of years. And I've been following it to this point right now. And the other day, there was a press conference in front of the city hall where one of the people involved in the debate, the president of the council, gave a very lengthy and detailed presentation of the budget crisis and the laws pertaining to it, and it was recorded by WSAR. Unfortunately, there were no challengers there to ask him questions. And I had invited some of the challengers that were on Facebook. And I said, "Come to the press conference and challenge him." Nobody showed up. That bothered me, that there was no challenges to the very persons directly as a spokesperson for representing some of you, you know, on the budget crisis. So I came here tonight just to express to you that as a former publicly elected official, I was an election commissioner, I'm very involved with the budget, had been over the decades. And you guys have got your hands full. I think what we need is the truth. And the truth comes by communication. And when Mary Sahadi, the other day, presented many facts that supported your position on the budget, I'm telling you, that's got to be advertised far and wide. And you have to deal with that and make a decision on that to get the truth out there. Why this mayor is not being more forthcoming and even directed his department head not to show up and give you further information, and thus he gave permission, that is a scandal of number-one proportion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next person assigned, no clapping, please. Next person assigned to speak would be Joseph Merk of 290 Cambridge Street. I believe I said your name correctly. If not, I apologize.
Merk, sir.
Merk.
I have some binders with some documents that I'll be referencing here.
Sure. Would you like it passed out?
Yes, please.
Madam Clerk?
Before I start, I'd like to say I'm not the greatest public speaker, so if you guys could bear with me a little bit?
Yeah. This is. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. As a long, as lifelong residents, we have always been proud to say we are from Fall River. Therefore, in addition by this situation, I'm coming to the city council to help address this issue, to uncover the corruption that seems to sadly systemic, to be sadly systemic in our city. It has been our dream to open a cannabis cultivation business here, a business that our city would mutually benefit from. And because we love our city, the injustices we have suffered have affected us deeply, and why we cannot remain silent any longer. We started our process at the beginning of this year. We have now submitted two applications for an HCA and have made no progress at all despite complying with all of the city's requests. The mayor waived the first $1,000 fee on the first application. On a second application, they asked for a 2,500% increase of the original waived fee. This fee the city was asking for on the second application was illegal per Massachusetts state law. Since we are the only applicants right now, any effort to maintain consistency regarding the fees as stated by the corporate counsel, Attorney Ramsey, would necessarily refer to past applicants. If so, then I truly feel sorry on their behalf.
Mr. Merk, can you just speak a little closer to the mic, Counselors? I have a hard time hearing you. Thank you so much.
If so, then I truly feel sorry on their behalfs, and it should be looked into. The application from the city had many errors in which we notified Attorney Ramsey of. It was a letter of non-opposition. Additionally, the application had us signing for a loan. We didn't apply for a loan. Had anyone taken the time to read over this document, these errors would have been clear. We corrected the application, submitted it to, we submitted it for viewing along with our non-refundable deposit, and they were accepted by the city, despite us pointing out all of its flaws. We sent an email concerned about the nonexistence of the commission as outlined in the application. In response, they offered our non-refundable deposit back. The city council should be aware of the email my attorney sent as a response to this offer. As a reminder to those who know and to inform those who may not, the email outlined the dishonest conduct thus far throughout the process. Earlier that day, in a public setting, Mayor Coogan had approached me about our email concerning the nonexistence of the commission, which quickly escalated. This felt unprofessional since we do have an attorney with whom we are working. On Friday, October 15th, after all the previous mentions had taken place, we received an email from the city of Fall River saying they are temporarily suspending the acceptance of any marijuana application for a minimum of 90 days. They also added they will be returning our non-refundable deposit. I came forward as a citizen of the city to show you the injustices happening behind the curtain. I had not come forward sooner due to fear of retaliation, but that no longer matters. I cannot remain silent. These injustices are happening under the current mayor and his office. We voted for him believing that he could do the job. Part of that job is to honor Fall River's vote on question four back in 2016, but our mayor is simply not doing this. This is detrimental not only to my business plan, but to any and all others like me, which in turn is hurting the future well-being of our city. This may put any chance for any future application at risk.
Motion to wave the rules.
Motion to wave the rules has been made by Counselor Peckham. Seconded by Counselor Dion. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. You can take your time, Mr. Merk.
Again, I'm not the best speaker, so.
You're doing great.
This may put any chance of any further application at risk, but after going through this process for so long, we felt it was time to speak up about these injustices we are facing trying to open our business in the city of Fall River. The city I love and call home. I really don't know where to go from here.
Counselor in seat four, Council Vice President.
Ms. Ma'am Clerk, could you make sure that all the counselors have a copy of the input? And did we all?
I can't hear her. I can't hear her.
Can you make sure that all of the counselors have a copy of his input? And could you also make sure that all of the counselors have a copy of the email? I know that.
It's in the, it's actually in that binder.
It's in our packet.
It's in the binder.
Thank you.
It's actually in order how it happened. We applied for the application. You can see all the incorrect statements in the application. We corrected them and highlighted them so you could see. Anybody could have seen, just reading that document, it was wrong. They still forced it through, and I believe it was for a money grab. The only reason why I'm standing here today is because I refuse to pay the astronomical price. It's illegal. So I feel if I would have gave them $25,000, I would have a different piece of paper in my hand right now, and I'd be celebrating. Now, again, I don't know what to do. I'm just a normal guy from the city that I grew up, and I love this city. For me not to be able to open a business here is sad.
So if I may, I know Counsel.
If there are any questions, I can put them out there. I can answer. I have nothing to hide.
So just so I'm clear, and I'm sorry, so were you advised of a cannabis control commission? Is that what you were advised?
I was. And that's where most of this comes from. When we questioned the existence of it, because after we filled out our application, we started asking around, well, who's on this commission? What's going on? I'd like to see what's going on. That's when we reached out to them about them taking our money but not having a commission which is stated in the application. That's when they offered our non-refundable deposit back. Now, why would you offer back a deposit, non-refundable, if you guys weren't in the wrong? So, again, we tried to move forward thinking this would get rectified. The only rectification came was them backing out of the deal and leaving it in my hands to try and find something out.
Now, just for clarification, you already located a piece of real estate, from what I see here, that.
We did. So I don't know if you guys are aware, but through the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission, we have to secure a location for a minimum of five years. I secured a location for a minimum of five years with an add-on of up to 15 years.
That you're already, that you're paying currently?
That we are paying for. So everything that we've talked about, as far as Mr. Coogan and Mr. Ramsey and Fiola, they went online, they went to WSAR and did an interview and said there was a completely transparent, no shenanigans process in order that they had just created. This seems like a lot of shenanigans to me. If they got to give me back a deposit because I asked them questions? I mean, how transparent can it really be at this point?
You still have the floor, Council Vice President.
Thank you. So just going in order here, so I did receive the email from your attorney, and it was after that, the letter that they, that corporation counsel sent you.
Yes.
Saying that they received it, it's the last page of the packet.
Yes.
And gave you your check back.
They sent it in the mail, a hard, hard copy. But the questions that were arose, that were brought to their attention by my attorney, actually on September 8th, we had a conference call with me, my wife, my attorney, and Attorney Ramsey. My attorney notified him it was illegal. You couldn't just come up and make up a price, just like is in the email. He basically restated all of that. So they knew a month before, just about a month before I submitted my application, there was major issues with this application. They made no changes to it.
With the format of the application, not your responses.
Well, no, they, they were aware that there were problems with the application itself.
Yep.
Saying I was filling out for a loan.
Yep.
The lender saying for a letter of non-opposition, a letter of non-opposition, a letter of non-opposition is for a medical.
Correct.
The state is now recreational. So the letter of, the letter of non-opposition does me no good. If I had a letter of non-opposition, went to the CCC with it, they would tell me to go back and get an HCA. So I'm here for an HCA.
And an HCA just for the community is a?
Is a host community agreement.
Host community agreement, which is different from?
Which is different from a letter of non-opposition. I need an HCA or host community agreement to get my recreational marijuana cultivation license.
So, so, so a, another facility that may be selling medicinal marijuana or recreational marijuana, they would need to pay our community host agreement fee?
Which would be 3%.
Which would be 3%.
A maximum of 3%, up to 3%.
And you're not, you don't, you're not required to do that, correct? Is that what you're saying?
No, I still, I still have the 3%, but this, the fee that they're charging for the application is in addition to the 3%.
Right. You're talking about the 3% once you open and you're selling.
Once I open and I'm running, if I, if I cause an impact to the city, I'm liable for up to 3% of my gross revenue.
Right. But not upfront, is what you're saying?
Not upfront. They just, the city themselves just asked for $50,000 and then found out I was a social equity applicant and knocked it down to 25. But both are still grossly overvalued on what it takes to open, to review the documents and look at my building. Because I'm social equity, they have no reason to look into my financials. The CCC, Massachusetts CCC, says I can open my business with no money in my account. So that has no bearing on my outcome. Because once I get the HCA, that is my first and best leverage to bring in, like, investors and raise capital. Because I can't ask anybody to invest in a dream. I have to have something for them to actually invest in, which is the HCA. So once I had an HCA, then I would have no problem getting investors. I have plenty of people who are willing to get in. When they found out that this was going on, I've had multiple people in numerous cities around here offering me pieces of land. Will this work for you? Will that work for you? There is a want for my product. I have three letters of intent to try and make this as easy as possible for everybody involved. When we first met with the mayor, he asked me who was going to buy my product, which I don't know any other business that gets asked, "Do you have a buyer for all your products yet?" I haven't even opened the doors. How can I have buyers? So I went out and I talked to other dispensaries, and I have three letters of intent of people who are willing to take more than I could produce per my business plan. Northeast Alternatives, one of the biggest ones around, has offered to take 50% of everything I could produce. So again, that would be a fourth. I've covered that. I didn't even need to do that, not even for the CCC. They complained that I didn't have enough parking. I'm going to have 15 people in Fall River, 15 people on South Main Street working at the business. I have seven parking spots behind my building. They, they didn't say I needed to, but they were questioning it like it was going to be a problem. We then went to the city auction and bought the vacant lot at the end of my building so we had parking. So again, we're investing more money, and they just keep stalling me out.
May I ask, and I'm so sorry to interrupt you, Council Vice President, how much are you invested into this at this point? Just curiosity.
Um.
If you don't feel comfortable saying that, that's okay. I'm just curious.
A lot. I'm definitely, definitely close to the $50,000 that they're asking for.
I won't interrupt you anymore.
I just have one other question. When you came to the city, who gave you the application to fill out?
Mayor Coogan himself. So there's, if, I have dates of everything. Mr. Rem, Mr. Fiola, Mr. Fiola did the interview on the radio, said he was approached this summer. I have email documents. He's the one who wrote the document up that I got in March from Mr. Coogan. So how could he possibly be reached out to this summer if in March, he's the one who drew up the papers? The check was supposed to be made out to his company. The $1,000 check that was waived was made out to his company, and that was in March.
The Council President, we just found out about the Fall River Cannabis Council, right? Because of their post on social media?
Yeah, right. Never heard about it before.
So Mr. Fiola was writing up documents for it in March?
Yes. I have emails.
So when your attorney pointed out all of the issues with the Fall River application?
Yes.
Corporation counsel for the city decided to give you your check back, cancel your application, and it's going to take the city at least 90 days to come up with an application that is appropriate? We didn't check that before we gave it out?
That, now, that's my thing. They've had my information for, since March, I think it was April 10th, if I'm not mistaken? April 14th. We had applied with the first one. So they've had all the same information since April. How do they not have the process straightened out yet?
April of this year?
April of this year, yes. And we played phone tag with them since January. It was a whole runaround. We called the mayor's office. They said you had to talk to the city solicitor, talk to the city solicitor. Oh, that's not our problem. You got to go back to the mayor. It was a whole runaround for almost the three months it took.
So we have 90, they, it's going to take the city, according to this, at least 90 days?
Yes.
And they'll notify you as soon as they reinstitute the application process? And then you have to start over?
And then I have to start over.
And in the meantime, you're paying for a property and a second property?
Yes.
To accommodate parking?
Yes. There's, there's a lot more detail to it. We'd be here all night if we dug into it. But I have a lot of proof on everything I've stated. I have correspondences for all of this.
I yield. Thank you.
Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
All right. So one of the issues I had, and I did read the email from your attorney, and I did see the Cannabis Control Commission that apparently exists, that the city council has no idea exists. One of the issues I took to, has every one of your applications stated that as part of this commission? Because I know there's been a couple, correct, applications?
Yes.
All right. Have they all stated city council members appointed by the mayor?
Only the second one.
The second one.
The first one didn't have that on there.
All right. Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Is the mayor allowed to appoint the city council, or is that left to the Council President?
I believe that would be, I haven't seen the law, but I would believe it's general practice at the Council President.
That's just my own adoration.
Yeah, it would be.
Because I had noticed that.
I believe, right.
And the reason I, the reason I asked about the application was, the first application you stated, who, Mayor Coogan gave it to?
Mayor Coogan handed that.
No.
Fiola emailed it to us.
Was there a price attached to the very first one and then the second one?
The $1,000 that they waived, because he said it wasn't completed yet, so not to pay that.
So the $1,000 was for the first one, and then you got a second. What happened to the first application?
Never heard any more of it. It never even, it never even came up in conversation when I got the second one.
How did you get the second? How were you able to make communication?
For us, for us, this is where it's going to get sketchy, and when I said, "We were in fear of retaliation," I'm about to blow some stuff up. So when we put the first application in, they wouldn't respond back to us. So we made a donation to reelection campaign. 45 minutes later, my phone rang for an appointment. We got an appointment to come get a piece of paper, which we thought was our HCA, which we filled out for. That's when they handed us the second application for $50,000 and 25 for our social equity.
So, all right, clarification. The second application was $50,000?
It's, it's in front of you. That is the actual application.
I'm looking at it.
So that application, just so you were aware, I downloaded that yesterday morning at 10:30. If you go to the municipal site now, it is still active, that same exact.
I did see the application on the city's website.
That is still active today.
Yeah. I did see it myself as well. I have, I have a problem with this. So what, the first application, you submitted it?
Yes.
And then what were you told by the mayor?
They would get back to us, and they never did.
And never did. And then, this is for clarification, because this is a very, this is a.
This is my wife, by the way.
Hi. This is a subject that needs to be discussed.
Just, if I may, Stephanie, last, same last name, same address. I'll note it. Thank you, Stephanie.
So after submitting the preliminary application where the fee was waived, we spent months playing phone tag, no phone calls back. We got an email from Fiola saying that he was in the process of making a new process for this.
That's very nice of you.
And it was supposed to be done for July 18th. July 18th came and went. We didn't hear anything, which is when in August, August 4th, to be exact, is when we made the donation. And that day, I got the phone call from Mayor Coogan to my cell phone, so I have the records, saying to make an appointment to come in. When we went into that appointment, he handed us that second application.
With the $50,000?
Yes. He wrote draft on the copy that he had given us, and obviously, we had major concerns with it, so we brought it to our attorney for him to review. He told us to basically just redline the wrong information and put the correct information, because if it's something that we wanted to proceed with, then it was a pay-to-play. That's what you got to do. If you want to have a business, and that's what they're asking for, then you're going to have to abide by what they're asking for. And he said we could always tackle it later.
Great. Now, since we're telling truths here, and if you don't mind me asking this, were you asked to make a donation, or did you do it yourself?
Somebody close to us, not in the campaign or anything like that, just.
Nothing to do with the city at all.
Nothing to do with the city, just said, "Hey, you know, I know that you're trying to get them to call you back. Have you tried?" And I said, "Ah, you know, I voted for him last time. Whatever. I, I don't mind, whatever." Never in a million years would I have thought that at 9:46, I made the donation. At 10:16, I got a phone call. Whether it was a coincidence or not, I don't know what to say. And then later, after we did our Facebook post, because we were super excited, we thought we were finally making progress. That's really what I put it out for. Somebody had commented on my Facebook saying, "Oh, you donated $125." It wasn't $125. It was $250.
And they split it into?
Yeah, I guess it was split into two donations.
Okay. So $250 total? All right. I just wanted to clarify the difference between the two applications and how it went from $1,000 to $50,000. I myself would love to find out how we go $49,000 on an application process for a social equity where you don't need a letter of non-opposition, where you only need a community host agreement, and it costs $50,000 to do so. That makes absolutely no sense to me whatsoever.
I feel the same. If you look in that binder, you're going to find a mass state law that says what they're allowed to charge for the application fee. And it clearly states they cannot charge, the fee cannot exceed the cost of performing the service, providing a service. So unless they can show me it costs $49,000, then we have a problem. Because they, they, they said that Fayola was getting a thousand dollars to review the application, and they had a contract. For a thousand dollars for him to review the, the applications. So if he's getting a thousand dollars and he's reviewing the paperwork, where's the other forty-nine or twenty-four thousand dollars going?
I'm not going to take up any more of your time, but I apologize for what you're going through. And hopefully, we can get some clarity to this, and.
I, I would love some clarity.
Yeah, Mr. President, if we can also find out when or where or if this, this cannabis commission's going to be formed, or?
Yeah, well, so Counselor, just for the record, like, I haven't been briefed, we get letters and emails from the mayor all the time now, because he doesn't, you know, all that other stuff. But I have never got a communication. I don't think our Council Vice President, Madam Clerk, I don't think we've received any written communications about requesting an appointment to the Fall River Cannabis Control Commission.
No.
Honestly, this is the very first time I've heard Fall River has a cannabis control commission. Very first time.
I just have a problem with an application being submitted with a commission that does not exist. So how much was the check you put down?
Twenty-five hundred dollars.
It was non-refundable at first?
Non-refundable. It's, it was non-refundable. It clearly states in the application, non-refundable twenty-five hundred dollar deposit. That's why I found it odd when we questioned about the committee, their first response was to offer us our money back.
Yeah, you find that odd as well.
That should say lots in and of itself.
Without knowing too much more, I appreciate the packet and your due diligence. I'm going to yield with that. I think my questions for now were somewhat been answered, but this definitely needs to be looked into a lot further and a lot deeper. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Counselor in seat one, Counselor Lekadeem.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I guess a lot's been said, and a lot of concerning information has been presented to us. But before we, I guess, jump to any conclusions, because I want to kind of give the administration the benefit of the doubt that we're not doing round two of the process of Farver's marijuana licenses. Could I just request through you to the, to the City Clerk that we put in a resolution that we have the administration before us at the next council meeting, which is Tuesday, to give us an update as to where we stand with the applications for marijuana licenses? And then if we can file a, or if the clerk can write a resolution for me, filing the request that a process be put forth in city ordinances identifying what the marijuana license application would be, that we establish if it is a Farver cannabis commission, that we establish that Farver cannabis commission within ordinances so that everybody is aware of what the application process is, what the committee. Because I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with the need to have a vetting process. I don't disagree with the fact that there should be some type of commission or board similar to what we do for TIFs. Where we have a TIF board, a representative from the administration. You know, Office of Economic Development was on it, there was councils that were on it. I think there needs to be a similar process with regards to the marijuana licenses. There needs to be some representation by counselors, the administration, and other entities to make sure that is a very transparent process. Because Farver has gotten this extremely wrong right from, right from the beginning. So we need to, we need to really kind of rectify this, and we need to do that immediately. It is concerning that we've got individuals who have invested money, and I know there was no guarantee that they were going to get a license. But there is some significant investment that's been put forth to, to now just wait ninety days and not really truly understand where the process is going to be. And I agree with, I think it was Counselor in seat four, who, who stated that, you know, when we're talking about putting together an application, you would have thought that the process would have already been vetted prior to it being submitted, right? So I think these are the types of questions that need to be had. I mean, we can listen to one side of the story. Unfortunately, the administration has refused to, again, come down and brief us on financial items. If they were here, then we would have been able to have some, I think, some dialogue back and forth during citizen input to figure out what's truly going on, to make sure that, you know, some significant allegations that are being made, whether they're true or if there's a little bit more information that needs to be clarified so that we're not all walking away thinking that there's this pay-to-play or, you know, the process is extremely broken. But I will, I will say that what we've been presented with is, is very concerning. So I think, you know, we need to have this conversation sooner than later. So I'd like to have a meeting for next Tuesday, and then the resolution, if we can get that on for the next agenda, so we can get that before ordinances. And I'm sure the, the Chair would move swiftly to, to work with the administration to get those folks down to the ordinance committee, so we can kind of begin that process. With that, I yield.
Counselor, is there anyone specific that you want invited to that meeting?
Anybody involved in issuing marijuana licenses, I guess. I'm not quite sure who that is, because this is the first time I'm hearing of it. So I think, you know, Mr. Fayola's organization or whoever the administration feels that the individuals, department heads, that may be part of the process. I don't know what Mayor Coogan has done with regards to putting people in charge, so.
Are you going to be?
At, at a minimum, it needs to be a representative from the mayor's office. Who can answer questions, by the way. I want to clarify that. I, I just, I don't want a representative coming down telling me that they don't understand or they're not privy to the information that's taking place. So if that's Corporation Council, then that's fine. If it's Mr. Fayola, then I'm, I'm good with that as well. But it needs to be individuals that are able to answer questions of the council.
Are you going to be able to draft that in some kind of a nice little handwritten document so that we can adopt the resolution this evening, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Counselor, you yield?
I do.
Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Well, certainly we want the Corporation Council, Alan Ramsey for sure. I feel these people here have a right to pursue things that they want, and sometimes you're put on a back burner, and that shouldn't work that way. You people work hard. You've got inclination that you are on the right road. You invest money in the city of Fall River to the point where you bought another piece. And it, it's just not right. It's, it's crazy. Like they say, pay-to-play. We kind of got entangled in the first time, and here we are. You know, it's happening almost again a different way. That's all, but it's not right for you or anybody else in your shoes that is looking for an opportunity here in the city of Fall River. A fair opportunity for everybody else. But they're just pushing you on a side. They give you your money back. They tell you about just, yeah, just back off. What you've done tonight is, is great to come out and tell us what you told us tonight. It, it, it takes a lot of guts to do that. Like you said, there may be repercussions, and I hope not. That we're here to make sure that things happen for you if it's the right thing. You know, but to say that you donated money, and then you got a call a day after, I mean, that's crazy. That's just crazy. You know, you can't get them, they won't talk to you, all of a sudden here, you give them a couple of hundred bucks, oh, yeah, what do you need? You all set? Well, that's a lot of baloney. That's it. What did I say about marijuana? I yield.
Counselor in seat two, Counselor Deion.
Yeah, I think this brings us back to, this is one of the problems when one person gets to make significant decisions. And I don't think, you know, and, and, and this doesn't, this isn't even a comment to anybody's character, it's just the fact of one person. Just like the ARPA funding. And, and I can't believe this hasn't been changed or streamlined since the, since the problems that we had before. You know, there, there should be a multi-member body to, to make sure everything is in order. There should be separate applications. As a gentleman saying, he doesn't even, his application shouldn't even require looking into his financial ability.
I'm a social equity applicant approved by the state of Massachusetts through the Cannabis Control Commission of Boston.
So if, if the state cannabis commission is approving something, who are we to say, now you have to prove to us that you, that you have the funding to do this? You know, we, we can never, you know, supersede mass general law, but yet so often, it seems that we tend to try to do it these days. I mean, I, I believe he put that, the Counselor in seat one, put it in, in the form of a motion. I would second that motion. I think we definitely need, need to move forward. These people need to be assisted. And you're right, the host agreement was fifty thousand. You're talking about a three percent impact fee. Two total different animals.
It is.
Completely different. And, and, and as far as that part goes, it isn't discretionary. It is what it is.
Yes.
So with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Per.
I had my hand up a long time ago, but I'm used to it. I have met Mr. and Mrs. Merk before, and I do believe a lot of what they were saying, I do believe that is very concerning for us to hear. My suggestion was going to be that it go to the Committee on Economic Development and Tourism, because that's where we do business and economic development. If the council so chooses to bring it to finance, then it can come to finance. But I think that sometimes we don't use our committees the way we, we should. But wherever it goes, I think that we need to bring all the parties down to get both sides and to see exactly what's going on, what's happening, and move this along.
I agree.
We certainly don't want to have a problem like we had last time. And we want to make sure, I know what your situation is, and your situation is not a situation where you'll be selling from your building. You are only cultivating
Yes.
the product in that building, and we spent time talking about that. So with that, I yield. It doesn't make a difference to me. If it goes to economic development, it's something we'll look at quickly. If it goes to finance, then it can go to finance, and we can discuss it there. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Counselor in seat three, Counselor Kilby.
Yes, just quickly listening to all these comments, I'm very sympathetic to what you may be going through, okay? But I, I would caution members of the council that there's been accusations that have been thrown out there based on what these nice people have said. But I'll tell you, it, when we start using the words pay-to-play, we start accusing individuals of inappropriate conduct just based on accusations, it's wrong, in my opinion. It's wrong. Counselor Deion, you made total sense in terms of sending the committee, taking a step back, having, hopefully, Mr. Fayola or another's down here to refine or answer some of these questions. And I see people in the audience nodding, no, no. I see some Jay-Zal Karaf supporters saying, no, this is ridiculous.
Counselor, let's get back on, let's get back.
I'm just saying, I, I have to say what I have to say.
Let's just get back on topic.
Okay, I'm on topic.
Thank you.
Right, and usually, citizen's input is not a dialogue back and forth like this. It is not a question and answer cross-examination. All right, so, so far, this meeting has been a lot of accusations against individuals. And hey, if you want to accuse me of supporting Coogan and defending him right now, go ahead. But if it was you being Mayor of Fall River, and this was going on, and people were accusing you of pay-to-play, then I would say the same things as I'm saying right now.
Okay.
All right, so let's take a step back, let's have the meeting. According to this letter, this application hasn't been dismissed. It's just a ninety-day backup.
No, they refunded our money.
They refunded your money, but it say.
And it says that.
We're going to complete our review, sir. We're going to complete our review in ninety days.
That's not what it says.
Well, that's the way I'm reading it.
That's not what it says. It says they don't know how long it's going to take. They're assuming at least ninety days, and they will inform us when they start enrolling.
I don't want to get into back and forth with you, but the way I read this letter is this still a possibility you're going to achieve what you want to achieve, and, and hopefully, that's going to happen for you. But what I do not like is accusations of pay-to-play and all this other nonsense, okay? Unless I see truth, that that is actually happening. So I yield, Mr. President.
Counselor, Counselor in seat one, Counselor Lekadeem.
Thank you, Mr. President. For Tuesday's meeting, can we also have, through you and the Vice President, request that KP Law come down? KP Law is, has attorneys who specialize specifically with the marijuana licenses. They've been following, you know, the laws with regard to MGL. They've been following the rules and regulations that came out of the Cannabis Control Commission. So I, I think when we're going to have this dialogue, I think it would be good to have them come down and actually present to the council and, and just for the, you know, the resident's own edification as to what type of licenses there are, what the requirements are for each license, because there are eight different licenses. We've got cultivators, we've got manufacturers, we've got retailers, we've got transportation, we've got research facility, we've got laboratories, we've got micro businesses, we've got social consumption and delivery. There's a whole host of licenses. The only licenses that the city of Fall River has dealt with to date have been medical and retail. Those are the licenses that have been issued. So I, I think it would also just benefit the council and, and the general public if we can have KP Law just do a quick presentation in conjunction with the administration coming down, so that we can get at least some more information for the, for the folks who have or at least attempted to try to, you know, invest in their, their business here. So if you can just put that on for Tuesday as well, I'd appreciate that.
No problem, Counselor. Thank you. You yield?
I yield.
And just, just for the community and to our colleague, we did two things this evening so far. So we waived the rules to allow these individuals to speak tonight. And I think all of us collectively regarding of what the allegations are, want to try to help people. That's why we run for office. And these two individuals, you have a man crying before the City Council because of the way he was treated. So for us to not hear him out and ask additional questions and try to find a way to help these people, I think would be doing a disservice, not only to them, but for the process and for the community. So what we're doing right now is we're hearing them out. Counselor Lekadeem made a very good suggestion to file a resolution, which we'll read into the record shortly, and then we'll have that discussion next week. Counselor in seat three?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Well, you, you said exactly what I think I said. But I do not like accusations unless I see proof. So strong words were used by some councils here that I think were inappropriate, and we, it shouldn't go to that extent. That's where I'm coming from.
Point of clarification?
Totally in agreement.
Which, which counsel, because I know. But I know when I spoke, Attorney Kilby.
I'm not going to get into that.
Just for clarification, I know when I spoke, all I did was say that we needed clarification on the topic.
And I'm not going to get into that.
That was a point of clarification.
Counselor Kilby has the floor.
Okay.
You do have the floor.
I didn't mention any words.
Counselor Kilby.
All I said is some of the statements I think were over the top. Listen, have the hearing.
Your exact words were, there was accusations made.
Have the hearing, as Counsel. Lekadeem suggested, let's hear the facts. And usually, when you have due process, when you hear from both sides, it clarifies many things for many people. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor in seat four, Counselor Vice President.
Madam Clerk, could you just make sure that we have Mr. and Mrs. Merk's information, contact information? Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
Attorney Kilby, I apologize for taking away from some of your time. Again, I think the words that were spoken on this floor were, we were looking for clarification into the story that we were told during citizens input.
Counselor? Counselor?
I think I have the floor.
Counselor? Let's, Counselor, let's give our colleagues some respect.
We were looking for clarification as to some information that we obtained. I don't think any of us said pay-to-play. I think it might have come out of the story from the people that are giving us citizens input. I don't recall it coming from any of the councils. So before we sit here and start pointing fingers at councils for making accusations, all I was doing, Attorney Kilby, was looking for clarification. That's it. That was my exact words, actually, I believe, is that I was looking for clarification as into the two applications. So for taking up a minute of your floor time, I apologize. But I just want to put that on record that I didn't point any fingers. I'm just looking to clarify. That's all. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Is there anything further? Harry, none. Thank you very much.
Could I say one more thing?
Sure.
I don't know of another business in Fall River that gets charged twenty-five thousand dollars for application fee. Twenty-five thousand dollar application fee? There's no other business.
It's going to get cleared up Tuesday.
There is no other business, sir.
Hopefully, it's going to clear up Tuesday.
Can I, can I speak?
Yes.
Can I speak, sir?
Counselor, Counselor.
I didn't, so that application in front of you was written by the city of Fall River, and it clearly states fifty thousand dollars is the first line of total fee. Fifty thousand dollars. Let's not brush this aside. It's a lot of money for anybody. Twenty-five thousand for social equity is still grossly overrated. So again, I would be happy if you could show me another application fee for another business in the city of Fall River for twenty-five thousand dollars before you stand there and accuse me of making false accusations. I brought you proof in those documents.
I'm tempted to respond, but I will not.
Good. Any, any further questions? Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the, actually, we're in citizens input, so at the end of our agenda tonight, we will entertain the resolution. But there is a motion on the floor to read, to propose a resolution to our council that has been made by Counselor Lekadeem, which will be read after the clerks have done writing it at the end of our, before we adjourn our meeting. Made by Counselor Lekadeem, seconded by Counselor Deion. Discussion on the motion to prepare the resolution. Harry, not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. We will hear that at the end of our very short agenda this evening. Thank you. Next person to sign up to speak, Nelson Vasquez of two ten Sunset Hill, Fall River.
Before I get into my comments, you know, Counselor Kilby, I take exception to you throwing those accusations out at Jay-Zal supporters. First of all, I'm coming at you as a Fall River citizen first and foremost. Okay, the fact is, you had somebody over here get treated in that manner, crying, shaking. It's a complete disrespect to how he was treated by the person that you support. But my question to you is this. On Tuesday, when this, when this meeting comes through, and it's proven, and you say he has the proof, what are you going to say?
As, may I?
Let's go through the citizens' input. Let's get through the citizens' input.
Yeah. I'll get to that. So tonight, I wrote mine. Dear members of the City Council, during the first open meeting back on July nineteenth, I reiterated the fact that utilizing federal dollars wisely was paramount for achieving fiscal responsibility. Every citizen and taxpayer in Fall River expects their local government to make decisions that's in their best interest when it comes to one-time money like we currently possess. The last thing we ought to be doing after coming out from last year's experience is continue unnecessary wasteful spending. After warning him about utilizing one-time federal money to finance his ambush budget, the mayor did not think about the potential consequences at the time and still proceeded to jam down the throat of the Fall River citizens. My question to the, to the city of Fall River, does that sound like he made you a priority? We all know the answer to that question. However, it appears that Groundhog Day has arrived in Fall River over budgetary matters. The mayor's handling of his budget will become an even bigger problem for the citizens of Fall River very shortly. Just recently, the Department of Revenue advised our city that one-time federal money, ARPA, cannot be used to balance that budget. In addition, Coogan and his financial team have been told to recalculate their loss of revenue accordingly. The confirmed budget deficit now will equate to be in the millions because of Paul Coogan's reckless and irresponsible financial mismanagement with federal dollars. The city must balance its budget, or the DOR will not certify the city's tax rate, and that will mean no money for the second half of the year. This dire, this dire situation facing our city now was discussed by certain city councilors and especially City Council President Cliff Ponte. The pending financial issues facing our city, along with this current deficit, will impact the citizens' pocketbooks for years to come. Those issues are going to require planning, critical thinking, and financial acumen to overcome positively for taxpayers. The city will need a decisive leader, someone who won't shy away from the issues, no matter their difficulty. When it comes to financial issues, the irrational, incompetent, and callous disregard for working-class citizens displayed by Paul Coogan showed clearly he is not making you, the taxpayers, a priority. Paul Coogan is willing to mortgage the city for one more term. I will not vote to give him that chance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next person to sign up to speak is Colin Dias at five sixty Ray Street regarding the budget.
Thank you, Council President, members of the City Council.
Thank you, Council President, members of the City Council. Before I-
Counselor, Counselor, have your seat, please. You can speak to them after the meeting.
Thank you. Before I begin, I just want to say, we shouldn't subject city residents based on who they voted for in the past. I didn't support Jay-Z forever, but I think it's important right now that we move forward as a city and do the right thing, because the mess that we're in today is what our focus should be in. And back to what I was going to say, and that's why we're here today. We need to call this for what it is. This city is in a financial crisis. This city's budget has a structural deficit, and the Sixth Floor has done nothing. First of all, they've done nothing. And second of all, they have done nothing but politicize the issue. And it's a shame, we're not following, one, the ordinance of the city. It's a shame, we're not following Massachusetts General Law. And when it comes to the school side of the budget, our schools are required and should be at 100% net school spending. That's a requirement under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 70. The City Council was shunned out of the process to allocate funding to retain 100% net school spending. And there's something that I don't think personally is really talked about. To approve the budget is mandated under its own laws, under the city charter, and there's debate whether the council can unilaterally shoot down the budget or not. However, the appropriations for our schools are mandated under a separate set of laws. If you look, you should take a look at Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 34, and I quote, and it states quite clearly, "The vote of the legislative body of a city or town shall establish the total appropriation for the support of the public schools," end quote. Only the City Council, and the City Council alone, can approve the appropriations for the school, which did not happen because the Sixth Floor shunned the City Council out of the process. And on the Department of Education's website, cities and school districts not maintaining 100% net school spending face penalties of, one, loss of state aid, nonapproval of the tax rate of the municipality's tax rate, and enforcement action by the Attorney General. Again, I wish Mayor Coogan could stop shunning the City Council and come to the table and work with our elected officials. I think the City Council should start issuing subpoenas to city officials and administer oaths to assure honesty to the questions, because that's the power, believe it or not, that City Council has under Massachusetts General Law. And I think it would solve a lot of our issues tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dias. Next person to sign up to speak, Susan Mathias of 99 Broad Street regarding the budget deficit.
Good evening, councilors. I am here tonight as a taxpayer homeowner, and most importantly, as a concerned resident with regards to the sad state of affairs in our city. I have lived in this city all my life and have never heard of a previous administration's refusal to appear before the council to address the serious budget shortfall and answer questions from the members of the council. It's like we, the people, are being held hostage until after the election, and that is unacceptable. I call upon this council to take whatever action it deems necessary to address this serious issue before the November election. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person to sign up to speak is Richard Barlow of 50 Anderson Street, State of the City.
Always after a short person. All right. Good afternoon, Council, Council President.
Good afternoon.
I don't know how many of you guys remember back in 2010. I mean, everybody knows I'm a strong supporter of the Fire Department. 2010, because we used a lot of one-time money. We had 213 firefighters, and thanks to some of the councilors at that time, they fought with the administration, like Verna Pereira, Leo Pelletier, who really supported our Fire Department. We were able to get that up to 175, which is still very low. 175 firefighters, 38 firefighters left to another town. Well, not 38, they didn't all leave, but they all got laid off. Some of them who just got married, bought a home in the city, and the list goes on. But they all lost their jobs because of mismanagement of one-time monies. So if we keep going down this road of one-time monies, we're going to be hurting longer and longer. And they're saying that, you know, we've got a structural deficit. Oh, well, we can move money here and there. But we heard from the administration that all departments are hurting for money, that they don't have enough of money. They need more money. So where are they going to get the money from to fix the structural deficit? It's not just a structural deficit. This is a bad deficit that we're into right now, because they're using one-time monies. And this council said, what if we can't use that money? There was no plan in place if they couldn't use the money. No plan whatsoever. Just like back in 2010, there was no plan, what we're going to do with these firefighters when those safer grants ran out. We've got to stop that. And we had the administration say, you know, being a police officer is not an honorable job. Who wants to be a police officer in a city if they're going to be worried about getting laid off? You know, when you become a police officer, you're very happy, you're making pretty good money with overtime and everything else, but then, boom, you're laid off. You know, every year, you've got to worry, yeah, is the administration going to have enough of money to support us? Are we going to be able to stay on the job? You know, I know Counselor Peckham went to the administration, tried to get the sheriff's office in here and everything else, and he just kicked it to the curb. We could have brought the sheriff's in here to help do detail, or numerous other things. We're bringing police officers from out of town to do detail when we could do it here with our own police officers, but they're all burnt out because we don't have enough of police officers. And the safer grant money, not the safer grant money, but all this opera money, not one talk about putting money into our Fire Department or our Police Department that I heard of. You know, like I said at one of the other meetings, we could do stuff right now to protect our firefighters with these air handlers. That opera money can go directly towards that to replace these air handlers in these fire stations. You know, they have a lot of new technology where it don't take up a lot of room, mini splits, and other systems where they don't have to do a lot of work into the fire station or even, well, the police stations are already done anyway, but our fire stations. So these men and women could have a safe place to sleep. When they come back, some of these new places, some of these new filtration systems, you know, have helper filters, and they're filtering out all the carcinogens that are in the air and saving our firefighters years down the road. So why can't we take some of that money? Why doesn't the administration just say, yeah, we're going to use some of that money right now, but now it's all tied up? Oh, we're going to just go give it to, you know, Viola's business. I mean, how much money are we going to keep giving this company? I mean, we've got money that, you know, going for, what, the state peer? We've got money for, you know, taking care of all these licenses, and, you know, I just want to apologize to that gentleman as a citizen, you know? That's very sad. That's very sad. And I'd like to say thank you to most of this council who are really supporting this gentleman and his wife, who wants to open up a business in the city. It's very sad that, you know, it went from what it was, $1,000, and it kicked back to $50,000. Like you said, I don't know if any company in the city has to kick up that kind of money. That's a lot of money.
15 seconds.
It's in black and white, on pieces of paper, that that's what the city wants. So I hope that, you know, we can get that all straightened out and do something with this budget. But, you know, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Now, to conclude the attendance for Citizens Input, Madam Clerk, is there's written communications?
Yes, just one.
Madam Clerk?
Council President and members of the City Council, it is with deep regret that I must send in the Citizens Input as it appears that the administration may not wish to completely, to be completely transparent with the public, but more especially the City Council. In a communication to the City Council President, the mayor stated that he wanted to follow the charter. He stated in his email, "We should both follow the charter so we don't put any city employees in a difficult position. Please forward all future requests to me." The mayor stated this after citing Section 2-3 of the Charter, which prohibits interference with the administration and restricts the actions of the City Council. Members of the City Council shall not give orders or directions to any city employee of the city, either publicly or privately. While I can understand this section of the Charter, the Charter also states in Section 2-7 Subsection C, "Mayor, the City Council may request specific information from the mayor on any municipal matter and may request that the mayor be present to answer written questions relating to that information at a meeting that the City Council may call within a reasonable time after the request is made to the mayor. Historically, the City Council has always requested financial information from the city administrator and/or the CFO without directing it to the mayor. This has been an accepted past practice. Under Section 2-7 Subsection A, in general, the City Council may make investigations into the affairs of the city and into the conduct and performance of any city agency. Further, in Section 2-7B, Information Requests, the City Council may require a member of a multiple-member body, city officer, or a city employee to appear before the City Council to give any information that the City Council may require in relation to the municipal services, functions, and powers or duties which are within the scope of responsibility of that person and not within the jurisdiction of the school committee. As is clear, Section 2-7 of the Charter allows the Council to approach any member of city government and especially any officer to obtain information within the scope of the City Council's investigation. It is clear that the mayor is in violation of the Charter, even though he has stated that both parties should follow the Charter. Further, the city's record access officer is the city clerk and not the mayor, as requesting that all further questions be sent to the mayor is a violation of Mass. General Law, Chapter 66, 6A, Section E, and 950 CMR 32.051C, which requires that all requests be sent through the city clerk. Finally, Section 3-6 of the Charter states, A, Communications to the City Council, the mayor shall by written communications recommend to the City Council for its consideration measures as in the judgment of the mayor, the needs the city require. The mayor shall by written communication keep the City Council fully informed of the financial and administrative condition of the city and shall specifically indicate in any such reports any fiscal, financial, or administrative issues facing the city. Under this section of the Charter, the mayor is required to provide the City Council with the necessary financial information for the City Council to act responsibly and appropriately. I firmly believe that if the administration does not appear before this council today, that the City Council President should enact the council's subpoena power and force the administration to appear, and if the administration does not appear, to take appropriate legal action to enforce the Charter, Mass. General Law, and the subpoenas if issued. This is not and will not be a political stunt. It will be representing the people of Fall River appropriately. Respectfully, C.J. Ferry.
Thank you. That will conclude Citizens Input this evening. First item on our agenda is to discuss a five-year budget forecast and the city's current finances. Let me just clearly say, and I know people are at home unfortunately not able to watch, that the administration did not send a representative down before us to discuss this. Now, I want to just make it pretty clear, and I know, you know, the opposites are going to say this is political, but let's just make a couple things clear, right? For the last several City Council meetings, we've been having discussions with the CFO about the city's five-year budget forecast. The cities, the city administration has stated repeatedly that they have a document, it has been prepared, it's a living, breathing document, it comes before us, it will come before us, and we've been requesting it. So after the meeting on Tuesday, as Council President, I sent a communication over to the CFO asking for the updated five-year budget forecast, because I think as city councilors, we have a role and responsibility to make sure that we're aware of the city's finances. I get an email from the mayor later that afternoon saying, "We're not giving it to you. In summary, all requests now need to go through the mayor's office." So I then, at that point, decided, as Council President, to require a four-year request, a public records request, that was then sent to the mayor. And in my six years on the City Council, and most of yous know, I was, I've been an advocate and I've made some tough decisions, I've took some tough stances. Never have I ever needed to request a Freedom of Information or request for public records to obtain financial documents relating to the city's future, which the CFO and the administration have been before us plenty of times saying they have it. So as Council President, I said on Thursday, you know what? Let's call a special meeting, and let's have a discussion about where we are at financially. And I think that we, as city councilors, are owed the responsibility to hear where we are at financially and not kick the can down the road. The councilors were all called and asked if they could attend the meeting. Councilors who were able to attend the meeting are here tonight. So I am frustrated, and I'm going to acknowledge councilors who have raised their hand, who want to speak about this, that we have some financial issues and nobody's here. And nobody's here. Now, I want to just point out that, under the City Charter, Section 3.6, Communications, "The mayor shall by written communication keep the council fully informed of the financial and administrative condition of the city and shall specifically indicate in any such reports any financial or administrative issues facing the city." And I'm not going to belabor the point, because I'm going to acknowledge our Council Vice President who's raised her hand, but the fact that we've used $7 million of one-time money in this budget going into next year and owing the schools 1.6 million plus another 1 million, it's a $9.6 million budget deficit. So no matter who the mayor is, whoever that may be, at whatever time that is, or whatever council that there is, should be made aware right now what the financial situation is. So I am personally, as a counselor, never felt so disrespected that we're not going to be able to get a financial outlook over the next five years. And I'm sure, and I hope, that my colleagues share the frustration. Counselor in seat four, Counsel Vice President.
Mr. President, before you recognize, councilors, can you just read into the record the letter that we received from the mayor at 4:19 today?
Yes, 4:19.
I'd like to add to that. That was going to be my question, to read into the record the letter that you wrote to the mayor, the letter that he wrote to you. I think they should all be read into the record.
Okay, I don't have the letter I wrote to the mayor. I summarized it for you, but I have the mayor here, the letter here from the mayor. Madam Clerk?
It was on email.
Would you like to recess and I can read them?
Yeah, it was on email.
Can we just at least read the, read into the record the letter?
The one that we received? Sure.
Probably go in order, Council President.
Madam Clerk?
The mayor's letter?
What are we going to do? I'm sorry. Counsel Vice President, what?
I would read those letters in order, so they make sense.
In order, so they weren't going to take a three-minute recess.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, can you go get? Madam clerk, can you go get? ...special meetings now called back into order at the request of the council. We went back and got the emails, and I will read the email that I sent on October thirteenth at one twelve P. M. to the city council office, to our council vice president, and to Mary Sahadi. Mrs. Sahadi, thank you for coming to the council meeting last night to address a very important and serious budget issue. The city council is looking to see what the deficit would be going into next year. Here is my math. This does, this does show that we are having an over seven million dollar budget deficit going into next year due to the mayor's attempt to address, due to the mayor's attempt not to address the issue in an election year. Two point eight million dollars of one-time opera money used for lost revenue. Two point nine million dollars taken out of our operational budget to pay twenty-eight positions, which the final rule is not specific enough, and we can have a large issue this year if they don't allow us to use it. One point six million dollars we still owe the school system, which you'll need one-time money to pay. When you add two point eight plus two point nine plus one point six, that equals seven point three million dollars. As city council president, I am requesting the most updated five-year budget forecast by Thursday end of business. Please highlight how much this administration, if reelected, would have to go to the debt exclusion. I am still unsure if I could call the special meeting, which I may do next Monday. Regardless of the objection, since the charter allows for me to call the special meeting, please confirm. Then I don't get any response. I follow up on Thursday asking any response on the below. I get a communication back from the mayor at one forty-five P. M. on October fourteenth. Cliff, pursuant to Article six point nine of the charter, you received a five-year financial forecast of city revenues and expenditures on December seventh, two thousand and twenty. This is the most updated forecast. We will issue our next report one hundred and eighty days before the start of the fiscal year. This is in response to your resolution on the agenda on Tuesday, October twelfth. Section six point nine, long-term financial forecast. The mayor shall annually prepare a five-year long-term financial forecast of city revenues and expenditures. The forecast shall address the general financial condition of the city, including but not limited to the identification of factors which will impact the financial condition of the city and revenue expenditure trends, including long- and short-term debt service to be incurred, a debt management plan, potential for new or expanded revenues, and any long-term actions that may have been taken to enhance the financial condition of the city. The forecast shall be submitted to the city council at least one hundred and eighty days before the start of the fiscal year. Section two point three, interference with the administration. Except for employees appointed in accordance with section two point eight, the city council or any member of the city council shall not give orders or directions to any city employee either publicly or privately. We should both follow the city charter so we don't put any city employees in a difficult position. Please forward all future questions to me. Following that communication, I said, "Thank you for responding." This is at one fifty-three P. M. on Thursday, October fourteenth. "Thank you for responding." This is to the mayor, Attorney Rumsey, council vice president, Tim McCoy, and Mary Sahadi. "Thank you for responding. However, I find it to be unlikely that you and your finance team do not have financials in the most recent updated five-year budget forecast. As a result, please have this email serve as a freedom of information request for any emails between Mary Sahadi, Tim McCoy, mayor@fallriverma.org, and this current email from you with the following key words for the last sixty days: budget, deficit, opera, American recovery, and lost revenue. Allison, please confirm that I am correctly requesting this information since I've never had to do this before as a counselor to get information. Also, please forward this to all councilors." Following that, we called a special meeting, and Mrs. Sahadi sent us a response on Friday afternoon at three sixteen P. M. on Friday, October fifteenth, saying, "Thank you for the invitation. However, the mayor will not allow me to attend." Those are the email communications for the record, madam clerk.
Mr. President, just point of information. I know you and I have had several conversations, but in the email that you just read, the mayor stated that the most updated five-year forecast was as of December two thousand and twenty. Is that what it said?
Right.
I think the conversation you and I had was that Mary Sahadi had, has updated that five-year document. Is that true?
Right, that is correct. And Mrs. Sahadi has indicated that to this honorable body on several different occasions over the last couple of months. And all we were asking for, because if you recall correctly, I asked at the last meeting, the last time we were talking about maybe, I think it was even the quarterly update, that we have this continuously updated in our quarterly report.
No, I don't want to call anybody a liar because the last time that happened, I got accused for harassment and bullying, so I'm not even suggesting that. All I'm stating is that there is one email from the mayor that would suggest that the document has only been updated since December. The last update was December two thousand and twenty.
Yes.
The chief financial officer, who is part of the administration, the Coogan administration, is telling councilors and you, which you relayed that to me, that it has since been updated.
Yes.
Okay. And so, which am I to believe? Is the most recent five-year forecast the December two thousand and twenty, or is there an updated forecast?
Based on the conversations that I've had, because, and to be candid and clear with everybody, every time I've ever had a financial question in six years, I've always called Mrs. Sahadi, and she's always given me the advice, the opinions, the input, anything that I've ever asked for. I've asked her on several different occasions, "Do you have an updated budget forecast?" Yes, it's a living document, it's updated on a regular basis.
And I would tend to agree with the chief financial officer that that document is updated. I just wanted to clarify, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman C. Day, councilor.
When do we get our first quarterly? It's coming up.
Next week.
Next week. So we'll know more at that point, too, what's going on.
Right, but the quarterly update doesn't have an updated five-year budget forecast.
Right, it doesn't have the five-year, but you're going to get some kind of information on where the trend is. And if the administration has to have the five-year forecast into us one hundred and eighty days prior to the next fiscal year, we'll have it there. It's, I've never seen it come in piecemeal. We get it, we got it in December of two thousand and twenty, and we get it again in December of two thousand and twenty-one. Every year we get a five-year. It always changes, it's never the same five-year. The plans never stay the same to continue it going. I just find it bizarre that, you know, we now, there's seven million dollars short. I know opera money changes all the time. I was just at the Pulaski Monument ceremony that they had on Sunday, and the mayor was there, and he was telling me with the opera that Cincinnati, Ohio, was able to buy police cars with it, where before it wasn't allowed and now it is allowed. So a lot of that opera money is very confusing and changes frequently on what we can use the money for and what we can't use the money for. We've got thirty-four million coming in this year, we've never had that before. We've got another thirty-four million coming in next year. This money needs to be used by the twenty-third, by two thousand and twenty-three. And what I haven't heard anybody talk about was the Bristol County money. Bristol County, Fall River's looking at getting approximately seventeen million because Bristol County got money and they're going to divide it up by all the cities and towns. Sure, I mean, I, you know, I have concerns, I want to make sure that we are on financial footing to do what we need to do, but I'm going to be honest with you, Mr. President, for a special meeting, I mean, maybe the budget didn't turn out the way we had anticipated it'd turn out, and it was through the charter, and it was, it's done. But if there was a concern there, that was in the, that was in June. We had meetings in July, we had a meeting in August, we had meetings in September, and all of a sudden it becomes special. The only special meeting that I recall having was when Council Joe Camaro was president, and we had a special meeting because we forgot to put a Fall River business who was applying for their license to be renewed, and we forgot to put it on the agenda, and we had a special meeting so that that person wouldn't lose their license and have to close their business until it started. I'm willing to talk about this, and the reason that I objected last meeting was because you can come and do it on the twenty-sixth. It just seems like we're trying to shove things down and, you know, quick, I know it's election time, but I got to tell you, I've been on this council, I ran for mayor because I thought I could do a better job, and I assume that's why anybody that ran for mayor ran because you thought you could do a better job. Councilor Kadim's run for mayor. Councilor Kilby ran for mayor. Who else was here with us? Leo. Leo never ran for mayor, but Kathy Viveras ran a few times. Marilyn Rodrick's ran, Bill Witty ran, Ray Haig. I was here when John Mitchell was running for mayor, Steve Camara, Joe Camara. I'm just telling you that what I'm hearing from people is, are we using this because it's campaign time? And I would hope that that's not the truth because I personally feel that the residents of Fall River deserve better from us, and I would hope that that's not why. But I've got to tell you, to have a meeting and not have people here, I disagree with that, I think people should come down and talk to us when they need to talk to us, but if we're waiting for a five-year projected plan, then that comes down. If they're working on it along the way, then that's a little different. But I've never seen them come down and talk about it along the way. I usually see it when it comes in, and then I don't see it till it comes in again. And that was one of the reasons that we put in quarterly reports so that as a council, we would see what the trend was, what money was being spent, what the percentages were in every single department. We didn't do that years ago. Leo, we never did. We did that, I think, with, when Mike Mayoza was on the council, that we implemented that, those quarterly reports. So, I don't know, I mean, there's nothing to vote on here tonight, and it's just all discussion. I don't have a problem discussing anything, but, anything, but people kind of know that I tend to say it like it is, and I'm going to tell you that in my heart, I think that, you know, everything that I'm seeing tonight just seemed a little uncomfortable for me because I just think the people of Fall River deserve better. And I also think the people of Fall River deserve better to know that the sky isn't going to fall. I've been hearing, I've heard so many times the sky is going to fall, and things tend to work out. I mean, are we going to put the school bill on taxpayers this year? Can we push that over to next year? Are we going to do that? You know that I said it from the beginning, I don't want to increase water and sewer. People need a break, and I clearly think that opera can be used to plug that gap so cut people some slack. But it's been in front of the ordinance committee, it's going again tomorrow night, and unfortunately I can't be here, but let's bring that to the council floor. If people want to vote for the increase, great. If they don't, then the administration needs to figure it out. I would suggest use opera money, water and sewer, we can use it, and do that. I mean, I just found out we don't even have fluoride anymore in the water because COVID, they knocked out of fluoride, so, and I thought that we should have been notified of that, but my dentist told me and showed me the letter. So, you know, it's just you can't get it, so. Anyway, I don't want to say much more than I've said, but I, you know, I got to tell you how I feel. But with that, I yield. Thank you.
Point of information, Mr. President. Hold on one second, one second, one second. Just so everybody's aware, I wouldn't have called a special meeting if we would have just got the five-year budget forecast. So in my opinion, there's something that they're hiding if they're not giving us the information. I have to acknowledge...
Just point of...
Point of information?
Because I recognize that Councilor in seat four has the floor, but we still haven't finished reading the letter that was submitted by the mayor.
Oh, the one that we have on our desk.
He did submit something on four nineteen.
Oh, I just read the emails, yeah.
So you just read the emails, but just to quickly go to Councilor in seat eight, she's, the argument she just made actually just justifies the need for a meeting tonight.
Right.
She talked about year one, thirty-four million dollars, year two, thirty-four million dollars, somewhere along the line, seventeen million dollars is going to come between year one and two. So we're looking for a five-year forecast. Year three, we don't have thirty-four million dollars. We don't have fourteen million dollars. Year four, we don't have thirty-four million dollars. We don't have fourteen million dollars. Year five, we don't have thirty-four million dollars. We don't have fourteen or seventeen million dollars coming from Bristol County. We have a structural deficit. Mary Sahadi was down before us, and she clearly stated, she didn't say we had a deficit, she was very, very specific to identify the deficit as structural. There is no worse deficit than a structural deficit. A structural deficit continues year after year after year after year. A deficit is a one-time shortfall. She clearly told this council we have a structural deficit, and I agree with you. If they submitted the five-year forecast down to the city council, then we wouldn't be having a special meeting. With that, can we just read the letter that was submitted to the, by the mayor?
Yes. Council vice president?
Before you read that, madam clerk, I just wanted to give some more history because I also had sent an email last week asking Mrs. Sahadi for a report. The report that shows what debt is coming on and off. We had talked about at the last meeting that some of the new schools, the last round of new schools would be coming off in a couple of years, so I had requested in writing a copy of that. I also had copied council president, the mayor, and Mr. McCoy as a courtesy. Mrs. Sahadi responded on Thursday and said that, she apologized... and said that, she apologized, but she was not able to send it to me and that I had to request it from the mayor. So I did, I called the mayor, and I said, "I'm requesting this report. I copied you on the email, and this is exactly what I'm looking for." And I described it to him. And he said, "Okay." And that was Thursday, and I still haven't received it. Over the weekend, I also was made aware that there was a possibility that not only was Mrs. Sahadi not allowed to come to this meeting, but that she's also not allowed to go to tomorrow night's ordinance meeting. So this morning, I sent an email to the clerk, and I asked if she could confirm who was invited and what their responses were, and she did. And the response from Mrs. Sahadi was that she was not allowed to attend the ordinance committee meeting. So I then sent an email to the mayor and corporation counsel. And with your permission, Council President, I will read it.
Yes.
It said, "I received word from the city council secretary that Mrs. Sahadi has been advised by the mayor that she is not allowed to attend the ordinance meeting, which I chair, and is scheduled for tomorrow evening, Tuesday, October 19." "I have two concerns. The first is that the agenda includes two items which relate to finance, the water and sewer rates and the new IT technical support specialist position proposed by the administration. A copy of the agenda is attached. My second concern is that not allowing an employee to attend a city council meeting is a violation of the charter. Please refer to Section 2-7 Access to Information, specifically Sections B and D." I won't read those again. I know they were read in citizens' input. "I said, 'I have scheduled an ordinance meeting to conduct the business of the committee. Not allowing the CFO to attend the meeting is blocking that from happening. The agenda is created according to priority and estimated time needed for each item. With the exception of accepting minutes and miscellaneous traffic, there is only one other item on the agenda. I would appreciate a response to this email by the end of the day so that I may update the other members of the committee accordingly.'" That is when the mayor responded this afternoon at about 4:20. And that is what they would like you to read into the record, Madam Clerk.
Madam Clerk.
Dear Council President and members of the Honorable Council, since there have been no items submitted by the administration to the city council for the special city council meeting scheduled for this evening, there will be no representatives from the administration in attendance. The city administration has met all timelines as required by the City of Fall River Charter related to the FY21 and FY22 budgets, and we will continue to do so. The FY22 budget passed solely based on the process outlined in Section 6-4B of the city charter. For further edification, there will be no return to bag or trash fees by the Coogan administration, and there will be no amendment to the FY22 budget to include the debt exclusion. The five-year long-term financial forecast of city revenue and expenditures will be delivered to the city council in December 2021 in accordance with Section 6-9 of the city charter. The administration will continue to update the city council on all state and federal funding for the city as well as the use of any ARPA funding. The ordinance subcommittee meeting scheduled for Tuesday, October 19, 2021, will be attended by Paul Ferlin, Director of Community Utilities, and Don Lewis, Director of Management and Information Systems, who will be available virtually or by telephone. Best regards, Paul Coogan, Mayor."
Thank you. So, since then, just for some more information to the council and those listening, Councilor in seat two did an incredible amount of research over the weekend, and we have spoken multiple times for several hours. And she actually requested that we contact KP Law about some sections of the charter that she forwarded. I received permission, Council President, from you to do so. I did. I spoke to her on Saturday, a little bit yesterday, and then again today. It was also requested that she come here. However, we decided that that's probably not necessary, that we have the information in front of us that we need in the city charter. I know that the mayor had said in the communication to you that everybody needs to follow the charter, and that includes the mayor. The, there's actually a section in the charter that says that. As far as the letter that he sent saying that since no items were submitted by the administration for the meeting scheduled this evening, there will be no representatives from the administration in attendance. However, you, Council President, have the right to call a special meeting. You did so in accordance with the charter. We told them what was going to be on the agenda. Just because they didn't send it down doesn't mean that they don't have to attend. Actually, we'll read those sections of the charter. Section B and D, I'm sorry, Section 2-7B, Information Request. "The city council may require a member of a multiple-member body, city officer, or a city employee to appear before the city council to give any information that the city council may require in relation to municipal services, functions and powers, or duties which are within the scope of responsibility of that person, and not within the jurisdiction of the school committee," which is what we did. "Section D. The city council shall by resolution request the attendance of any officer or employee of the city, but not including the school committee or employees of the school department, to appear before under this section. The resolution shall include the subject on which the city council seeks information and may contain specific questions prepared by the council. No officer or employee called to appear before the city council under this section shall be required to respond to any question not relevant to the subject of the inquiry as identified in the resolution. The mayor shall receive a copy of all such resolutions." The council secretaries give notice every time they plan an agenda, and they invite the different members as appropriate to the meetings. So by Section 2-7 Access to Information, we've done everything correctly. We always have. It's a process. They are invited, and they come. So for the mayor to forbid anybody to come is actually against the charter. So if we're going to follow the charter, we have to follow all of the sections, not just specific sections. This section here tells us what powers we do have. The section that he was referring to refers to powers we don't have. We don't have the authority to give a directive to an employee. I can't call up Mr. Perry and say, "Hey, you need to go fix the pothole on Second Street because I said so." We don't have that authority. We can ask him, we can tell him there's a pothole there, but we don't have that authority. We do have the authority to request that city employees come before the council and answer questions on a specific topic, which is what we did. So the fact that they're not here is a violation. We had a conference call today with KP Law and asked, you know, what can we do? Here we are again. We have sections of the charter, and we have an administration that's not following it. And it's not just for this meeting. It's now for tomorrow night's ordinance meeting. And his letter here does not give any reason why Mrs. Sahadi is not allowed to go to either of these meetings. So we have the option to enforce the charter in Section 9-14. And that would be, shall be by the duty of the mayor to see that the charter is faithfully followed and that all city agencies and city employees comply with its provisions. Whenever it appears to the mayor that a city agency or city employee is failing to follow this charter, the mayor shall in writing cause notice to be given to such city agency or city employee directing compliance with the charter. If it shall appear to the city council that the mayor personally is not following the charter, the city council shall by resolution direct the attention of the mayor to those areas in which it believes there is a failure to comply with the charter. The procedures made available in Chapter 231A of the general laws may be used to determine the rights, duties, status, or other legal relations arising under this charter, including any question of construction or validity which may be involved in such determination. I think the most important thing that Attorney Goldberg said to us on the conference call today is what do you want to accomplish? And for me, which I said to her, is, you know, we want to do our job. The administration, Mrs. Sahadi was here last week. She agreed that there is a structural deficit, a significant structural deficit in the budget, that fiscal year that we're in right now. So the fact that we're not having conversations about it, not knowing how we're going to fix it, not even in cases acknowledging that it exists, is a problem. So I want to sit down and everyone figure out how it is we go about it. That's why I put the resolution in last week and asked that it be done at next city council meeting, Committee on Finance, along with the first quarter review. So, next meeting, is the CFO coming to the next meeting? Or is she not going to be allowed to come to the next meeting?
Madam Clerk, have you got any word on that?
I have not.
I have not either.
We haven't sent the official invitation as of yet, though.
So, and I know that Councilor Dion can probably fill in everything that I've forgotten. Our choice here is to, by resolution tonight, send a a message to the mayor requiring that he uphold the sections of the charter. I mean, we can work on the wording. We can, you know, decide how it's structured. Other than that, do we have subpoena power? Yeah. Do we want to have to take the mayor to court? No. I mean, this is, this is crazy. We've never had information, financial information, and information of any kind purposely withheld from the council, who's just trying to do their job. So, Council President, I understand that you're running for mayor, but there are eight other councils here that aren't running for mayor. You're still council president, no matter what happens in two weeks, until the end of the term. We're all still councilors, no matter what happens in two weeks, until the end of the term. And we all have a job to do, and that's what we're trying to do. So I'll yield to my colleagues. And I'm sure they want to weigh in. I am sure that Councilor Dion will weigh in as well. And I also want to commend her for the research that she did over the weekend and continues to do. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor in seat two. Councilor Dion.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I listen to my colleagues, and I agree that the City of Fall River and its residents deserve more. When I ran for city council, I ran for city council because I wanted to be a voice for the residents and the taxpayers. I wanted to, I believe in open and honest government. We've been told on multiple occasions by the CFO, we have a problem. We have a structural deficit. To put it off until it becomes dire is irresponsible. This council has a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers and the citizens of Fall River. And I think, I know I speak for myself only, but I believe that there are more, there's more than one counselor on this council who believes the proper way is to address it now. You don't wait until we're $7, $8, $9, $10 million in the hole and trying to set up a budget. You know, when you have a problem, the sooner you address it, the sooner you can fix it, and the better off everybody is. The fact that the mayor continues to violate the charter and try to use the charter against his council, saying the council is the one violating the charter, doesn't get anybody anywhere. You know, we need to address the issues now. I believe in terms of the subpoena power, the subpoena would be that we can subpoena them to this council to answer questions under oath. I don't think that we necessarily, that we have to go into a court of law. It would take place here. They would have to answer the questions here. However, it brings us back to the charter. We have to follow the charter. We have to follow what the charter lays out. The charter states in Section 9 that we have to basically put the mayor on notice, say, "You're not following the charter. These are the areas you're not following the charter in," giving him the opportunity next week to comply with the charter. And then, from that, from there, we would go on. Hopefully, the CFO, at the least, can come to the table. We can discuss the reality of the situation. Because if we all don't want what's best for the taxpayers, and every one of us are taxpayers, then why are we here? And with that, I yield.
Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
Perfectly said, seriously. Again, I appreciate your work as well, Councilor Dion. And it was very well said, Council Vice President. I've heard, and not just here tonight, on the radio recently, that this is all politics. And I know we brought this up. I don't find that to be the case at all, that we're playing the politics. And I won't beat a dead horse here. I just find it ironic that everybody disappears into this imaginary bunker that apparently is on some side street in Fall River, 16 days before an election, and can't explain to us why the budget is in the shape that it's in. to us why the budget is in the shape that it's in. Maybe in 17 or 18 days after the election, we can figure it out, but I kind of have a feeling here that we're being held off for 16 days for a reason. It's my own hypothesis, but it seems to be pretty blatant. We have nobody sitting here in front of us. If I listen to the mayor on the radio, you would think that there is no, now, what did you say the exact shortfall was after your calculations?
7.9.
7.9, thank you, Counselor. If I listen to the mayor on the radio...
9.6.
9.6, even better. When I listen to the mayor speak about the budget on the radio, though, I feel like running outside with a net and catching $20 bills that are falling from the sky. That's how I feel. $9.6 million is a very, very big deficit. I don't know where we're going to come up with the money for that. It is a structural deficit, as Counselor in seat one said. It is something that needs to be addressed now. Doesn't matter if we're 16 days from election, six days from election. If you're running for mayor or Counsel killed, whoever, this is a topic that should have been addressed tonight. We should have the CFO in front of us, and the mayor holding the CFO hostage from the city council. I'll touch upon what Counsel Dion said. We are the fiduciary responsibility of the city of Fall River, the legislative branch. Any person that has taken away from us for us to be able to obtain the information we need to make sure that the fiduciary, the fiduciary health of the city is intact, that's just wrong to me. She should be here tonight. She should be at the ordinance meeting tomorrow night, and the administration should be playing an active role in every meeting that we partake in. And with that, I yield, thank you.
Just for clarification, she was told not to be here.
And I understand that. She was given an order, whatever, directive not to be here, and I get that, and it's no fault of her own. She's following the direction of her boss, and I can appreciate that. The mayor should definitely be sending somebody down. Thank you.
Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Yeah, I'm going to be a little shorter than you guys. Called a special meeting for a reason. He had an opportunity to come down, and he didn't come down again. It's not the first time. We asked him to come down to explain the deficits and the five-year plan as well. So, I just think that, you know, to tell Mary Sahadi, we don't want you to go down there, for what reason? Because she almost said there's a problem, just about. The five-year plan is already, and they could have brought it down and show it was a five-year plan. So, you know, to me, common sense, that's all it is. Get down here. We're asking you to get down here. Common sense, come down, address us, then we're all set. You're all set? You've done your duty? We'll do our duty. But to do this tonight to us, I think it's an injustice. Whatever 16 days or 14 days to go, he could have come down. And to say that Mary Sahadi is not going to come down for the ordinance is wrong as well. So, you know, we've got a tough job. We try to do the right things, and I think it's the wrong thing for the administration not to be here tonight. With that, I yield, Mr. President.
Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Pereira.
Yeah, I kind of got struck at the word subpoena, because I thought the only people that could issue a subpoena is judicial branch. We can perhaps summons, but not subpoena. So, if my colleagues have information they've gotten from KP Law, I'm not a lawyer, maybe my colleague in seat number three can talk about the difference between a subpoena and a summons, or what that's all about. I'm not willing to take a vote on subpoenaing or summoning people to come down when I haven't had the opportunity to speak to our legal counsel or to KP Law to figure out what is it that we can do.
Point of information, if I may?
Sure.
Part three, Title II, Chapter 233, Section 8, under General Laws, Courts, Judicial Officers, and Proceedings in Civil Cases, Actions and Proceedings Therein, Witnesses and Evidence, Bodies Authorized to Summon Witnesses Under Oath.
Okay, summons, okay. That just clarified it for me. That just clarified it for me, summons.
Witnesses may be summoned to attend and testify and to produce books and papers at a hearing before a city council. And if you look in the charter, there's an area in the charter that states that the city council has subpoena powers.
Well, I would, I would beg to differ with what the city charter says regarding subpoenas, like everything else that the city charter says that we've gone to court and we've lost on. Summons, I can understand, and maybe if the city charter would have said we could summons, but I don't know. My colleague in seat number three perhaps can enlighten us if he knows. I thought always, my 10 years at the District Attorney's Office was that the only ones that can subpoena is the judicial branch. Summons, I can understand. Subpoena, I can't. That's...
I'm not here to be the city's attorney, but to clarify my years of experience...
Your microphone, Counselor.
I'll yield.
Your microphone? Your microphone? As your point of information, Counselor?
Yeah. In my experience, a subpoena is, in my, always associated with a court case. I'm not familiar with the Mass General Law Citation that Counselor Dion suggested, but if this, summons and subpoena is different. A subpoena is a very powerful tool. There's contempt, you know, potential contempt charges if subpoena is not obeyed. A summons is more of a request, doesn't have as much teeth as a subpoena. But while I'm on this point, I would ask in the future, and when KP Law is engaged, and especially if we're on a conference call, I would like to know when and where it is, so I could attend. And it's nothing against Counsel President, but I would, I would like to be there.
We just have to be careful, open meeting law violations.
That's true, but it's still, I mean, how many people were there, if you don't mind me asking you?
It was just that counsel leadership.
Through to the President.
It was Counselor Dion as well, because she is the one that brought, that requested KP Law. So, and I did send a in-depth email to the council with exactly what we were questioning in the charter, the sections of the charter, and to answer Counselor in seat eights, if you don't mind, we did not get into a conversation about Mass General Law. It was mentioned, but we mostly spoke about what we have the power to do initially, which is what I would suggest, and that's a resolution under Section 914 informing the mayor that he's not following the charter before we do anything else or get any information on anything else.
So, are we going to get that additional information that you got? Are we going to be able to get something from KP Law? When did you talk to them? When are they going to send us an email? I would have liked to have known for tonight if they did minutes to the conversation or...
I'm sorry, what was the first part of your question?
Well, it was an...
No, we asked them not to prepare anything. We just said that we, we asked for not to come. We didn't want to spend money on this and have it turn into a whole big deal. We said that we would use Section 9-14, which, and I did ask the council secretary to make sure that everybody had a copy of the charter in front of them, and she indicated it is where, council secretary?
In your code book.
Every one of us has a code book, and it has the charter in it. So, it was, I don't know that an actual formal decision was made, I take that back. There was a decision made not for her to come. There was a decision made that we didn't want anything, her to take any time writing anything up. We spoke about going with Section 9-14 first and sending a communication to the mayor.
I don't have anything other than to say, if somebody summons, is there a date or a timeline on a summons, when you issue a summons? Sometimes there is. Sometimes it's you issue a summons and they have to reply within 30 days.
Point of information, are we summoning someone? Can we just get the administration to send people down? That's all we need to do, right? We don't need to make this, we don't need to make this any cuter than it needs to be.
I just want to be very clear, point of information. We did not talk about that, although that is an option, and it was mentioned today. It's been mentioned on the radio. It's been mentioned on social media. We did not get information. I don't know anything about dates. I don't know how the process works whatsoever. I would hope that we would send this, and that the administration would be at our next city council meeting.
Right. And just so everybody's aware, we're not having this conversation if they were just here. We don't need to get really, like, in-depth in terms of subpoena power, summon power. Just show up and do your job. That's all we're asking. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadim.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, here's the bottom line. We've got a structural deficit, which I still think needs to be explained to the citizens of this community, so that they truly understand what's going on. There's a pivot that's being done, or a deflection, on it being put on the city council as being politics. At the end of the day, the administration does not want to send the chief financial officer down to this table because of the statements that she is making at the council. They want to make sure those statements are not being said before an election. So, the only time, the only person being political is the mayor, right? Is that not accurate? Because Mary Sahadi cannot come down to the council anymore. We'll have Paul Furlan tomorrow to talk about some financial items. We'll have the MIS director, but we will not have the CFO. So, the CFO, because she was here before us stating that there was a structural deficit, cannot come before the city council until after November 2nd. Are we all comfortable with that? Should the citizens of Fall River be comfortable with that decision? Right? So, this is, this is all that it is. We can talk about summonzing, because after November 2nd, everything will go back to normal. We'll still have people back here. We'll be going to the debt exclusion. We'll be raising taxes. We'll be doing everything that we said we weren't going to be doing. Okay? Because at the end of the day, the use of one-time monies to reduce fees while it will make the taxpayers and the ratepayers feel good for a year, if we haven't found a new mechanism for revenues, or we haven't reduced our expenses, which we haven't, all you're doing is kicking the can down the road, and the ratepayer and the taxpayer is going to pay double the amount that they would experience this fiscal year. So, in terms of a structural deficit, just to try to make it as clear and as simple as possible, if you've got a salary, if you've got income coming in, and you get laid off for two months, and you can't pay your mortgage for two months, that's a deficit. If you've got a mortgage, and you get fired, and you don't have a job, that would be a structural deficit, because you do not have income coming in, not only for two months, but for this month, next year, the year after, the year after that, unless you get a job. To make it even further more simple and to get this for people to understand, we have a building department. The building inspector goes out and assesses buildings. If there is a building with structural deficiencies, the building inspector will not let anybody into that building for fear of collapse. We had a 12-story apartment building that collapsed in Miami because there were structural deficiencies. Now, the city's finances, if it was looked at as a house, had a structural deficit, we should not be letting anybody in there, because there is a potential it could collapse. So, we have a financial situation that is near collapse. The fact that the mayor doesn't want to recognize that, doesn't want to send the CFO down to have conversations, doesn't want to show us the updated five-year forecast, which, by the way, just look at the original five-year forecast from December of 2020, there are deficits. There are deficits. We're in the negative. Just add to the fact that the federal government continues to give us one-time monies over and over and over again, and we're going to plug it in to city expenses that are reoccurring. We're going to put it into salaries. We're not laying police and fire off. So, if we pay police salaries, guess what? We're creating more of a structural deficit, because we're not going to have that money once all that money expires. This is the reality of the situation, and I understand some folks don't understand how severe it is, and why, as Counselor in seat four stated, you're running for mayor. None of us are running for mayor. We still have the right to ask questions. If you want to go and abstain, then go abstain. But there are eight other councils that need to ask questions and are failing to ask questions, or are not given the opportunity to ask questions. And the only person playing politics, you can call this, this meeting itself, politics if you want, but we've been asking, we've been asking the questions since June, June, to have a conversation with this administration. I've said it in June that we have a structural deficit. I've said that we weren't going to get our tax rate certified, because at the end of the day, when the tax rate is timed to get certified by the Department of Revenue, they're going to look at our revenues. There are no appropriations to cover. It's not a balanced budget. Our revenues do not equal our expenses. What we have is more expenses than we have for revenue. We've got to make it up somewhere. So, the only way for that to come, and I like the cute wording with regards to, we're not going to go to the debt exclusion. Well, the CFO has already told us, when we sold the debt exclusion to the taxpayers, it was a 60-40 split. Again, and I'll say this again, I was the only counselor that voted no against the debt exclusion, because taxpayers do not understand what a debt exclusion means. It was going to be a money grab. The authorization is for the full amount. It's not a 60-40 split. Even though the administration is saying that they're going to do a 60-40 split, at any point, they can go to 100% of the authorization, which is what's going to have to happen. We're going to throw $5 million of additional taxes onto the residents, because we need $5 million to cover a deficit. And that's $5 million for 30 years, on top of two and a half, on top of your assessment on T- taxes, on top of your, your rate, your water and sewer rates increasing. So, when do we have these conversations? After November 2nd? At that point, there's only six months left to the, to the fiscal year. Right? So, at that point, if you have to cut $10 million, that's now $20 million, because you've already spent half of your, your expenses. So, now you've got to find $10 million in the other half. I'm not sure who's playing the politics, but at the, at the end of the day, we're all in a political arena, right? It's all politics. We're politicians, okay? We need to get over it. And if the mayor is so concerned about sending down his CFO because of what's going to be said, then he's got bigger issues. And he needs to answer to this community, he needs to answer to the city council, good, bad, or indifferent. If we've got a deficit, then it's our responsibility to work on it together. That's all we've been asking since June. Come down to the table. Let's work on this, this budget, because we did not pass this budget. We didn't feel comfortable with the budget. We weren't okay with the rate increases. We weren't okay with the one-time monies. Doesn't mean that a budget wasn't going to get passed. We could have figured it out. We might not have all been in agreement. Maybe it would have been a 5-4 vote. Maybe it was a 6-3 vote. Maybe it was a 9-0 vote. But we needed to get it down to the table, so we, as a council and as the administration, could say, okay, we are comfortable with the budget that we're putting forward. We're comfortable with the services that are being put forth, and we feel that it's sustainable. None of this is sustainable. It's a house of cards, like Surfside is coming down. It's crumbling. I'm not going to be the one that's underneath it. And I'm also not going to be the one that said, I told you so. So, Mayor Coogan needs to figure it out. He needs to put his big-boy pants on, come back down, send Mary Sahadi, and let's have a legitimate conversation about where we stand. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. In seat four, Counsel Vice President.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out one more section of the charter, because I can't remember if I did or not. Apologize. Section 36, Communications. Communications to the city council. The mayor shall, by written communications, recommend to the city council for its consideration measures as, in the judgment of the mayor, the needs of the city require. The mayor shall, by written communication, keep the city council fully informed of the financial and administrative condition of the city, and shall specifically indicate in any such reports any fiscal, financial, or administrative issues facing the city. So, not only does he have to send folks down to answer questions that are on the agenda, he has another obligation, that even if we didn't ask for them to come down and answer questions, that by Section 36, he has to tell us on his own, and he's not. And I also wanted to point out an example of a structural deficit that I think we've talked about a lot, and people might understand it a little bit easier. Not that Counselor in seat one's examples weren't great, but when we had the safer grant, that was $14 million. And when the safer grant went away, we then eliminated, the city eliminated 60 positions from the fire department, because we no longer had the money to pay for it. We used one-time money to plug a hole, and when the money's gone, there needs to be cuts made. And in that case, $14 million. Now, I heard Counselor in seat eight say she thought it was at $7 million. I heard you say you thought it was at $9 million. I'm not sure what the actual number is, because nobody's here, but I can tell you when it was $14 million, that was complete chaos, and that was eliminating 60 positions. That I yield.
Anything further from the council on this item? Hearing none, and we have the next item on our agenda, Madam Clerk, on that resolution.
Whereas concerns exist regarding the creation and existence of the Fall River Cannabis Review Commission, now therefore be it resolved that the Corporation Council, Kenneth Fiola, Executive Vice President of BCEDC, or a representative of the mayor's office qualified to respond to questions regarding this commission and the process of approving marijuana licenses, as well as a representative of KP Law at a meeting of the Committee on Finance, and be it further resolved that the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation meet with the same parties to draft an ordinance establishing such commission.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion on the resolution. Counselor in seat one, you good?
No, straight forward.
Very good. Hearing no further discussion. Motion has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Counselor in seat four, Counsel Vice President.
Sorry, I had my hand up for the last item. I wanted to make a motion that we, under Section 914, that we send a communication to the mayor notifying him that he is not complying with Charter Section 2.7 and Charter Section 3.6.
Madam Clerk, you have that? You want to introduce that one more time? Motion made by Counsel Vice President two. I didn't write all that down.
You're asking me or her?
Her, our clerk. Could you just read that for the record again, Madam Clerk?
Notification, to send notification to the mayor that he is not complying with Section 3-6 and Section 2-7.
Is that correct, Madam Vice President?
Yes.
Motion made by Counsel Vice President, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Do we have discussion? Hearing no further discussions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.